Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our meeting at the Roseville High School. We'd like to please stand and we'll have Mr. Superintendent give us our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Love the support, thank you.
We all feel like we're part of the Addams Family up here. So, we're gonna start, um, first I just have to take the, um, get approval of the minutes from the last meeting of, um, April 24th, so I need a motion, please.
McCartney will make the motion to approve the minutes.
McCartney.
Support Ayuda.
On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nice things happening. Now, we're gonna start Nice Things Happening, we'll get all these bags and pictures out of the way, so, Mr. Rice, you wanna start?
Good evening, everybody. It's great to see so many people here. At this time, at this part of the meeting, we like to celebrate things that are really great in our district. It's called the Nice Things Happening section, and I have to tell you, we are loaded tonight. We have so many good things going on, uh, we have a lot of people to, uh, to go through and celebrate, so, welcome to the parents, welcome to the kids. Um, so, we're gonna, we're gonna start, uh, with our outstanding teachers of the year, and what I'm gonna have you do first, so, teachers, hang on. If I can have Mr. Kamorowski, Mr. Beato, and Mr. Betten, please come up to the stage. These are the, uh, these are the principals. Um, Mr. Kamorowski is, uh, standing in for Mr. Felker. Mr. Mers, come on up, we're gonna have you go first from the elementary school, and we'll call you teachers up one at a time, so, you can...
It's like Mr. Rice said, um, I'm here helping Mr. Felker, but Mr. Mers does also work in at Fountain Elementary. I met, uh, or became closer with Mr. Mers last year when she started being an instructional coach at Fountain, and just from seeing what she does at Fountain, I can understand why she won this award. She's always willing to help others, um, she helps the students at Fountain even though they're not hers. She helps all the teachers, um, especially our new teachers, with technology, with things that they need to learn, it being new, so, she really does a great job at Fountain, and I do have, um, a write-up that Mr. Felker wrote about her, so I'm gonna read that. "I would like to again congratulate Karen Demers on being the Roseville Community Schools' Elementary Teacher of the Year. Her dedication to our students and teachers show in everything she does. Mr. Mers is an advocate for our students as well as a great role model. I write that she is a great role model because she grew up in Roseville, went to Roseville Community Schools from kindergarten through 12th grade, and returned after college to teach Roseville students. She has spent her entire career with us, and we, as a district, are better for it. Mr. Mers is not only a teacher and a role model for our students, but also for our staff. In addition to teaching, she serves as a district instructional coach and a teacher mentor to some of our newest teachers. Mr. Mers also serves on the building and district committees every year. At Steenland, she's a major contributor to professional development sessions, the Marches Reading Month Committee and the Sunshine Committee. As a Sunshine Committee member, she helps plan events and recognitions, recognizes to keep us working and team bonding through the social events. She has a fun and positive outlook that is infectious to those around her. I am proud to say that Mr. Mers is a teacher at Steenland Elementary."
Mr. Mers, who did you bring with you tonight?
Uh, my husband, Matt, is here.
Next, I'd like to introduce Mr. Rower Beato, he is the principal of Eastland Middle School, and if I could have Evan Lewenberger, please come up.
All right, your parents here?
Yes.
Why don't you stand up? You wanna stand up and be introduced, so, I'm gonna say some good things about your son, so, why don't you stand up? So, as Teacher of the Year, if you ever had to Google, like, if you just go on Google and you Google Teacher of the Year, Evan's, Evan Lewenberger's name should appear, his picture should appear. That is just how good and such, such a great teacher he is. He's the type of teacher, to be honest with you, that I would want my own daughter to have. My daughter's a sixth grader, she goes to another district, but if, I would be absolutely honored if my daughter had Mr. Lewenberger as her social studies teacher. So, he is a vital member of the Roseville community, he's well-respected, he's a trusted teacher in both his council and his direction at Eastland. He acts as a sounding board, as a go-between between administration, as well as the Eastland staff. He's a member of the teacher union, he's a building representative, as well as a member of the teacher leadership group at Eastland. Evan also works, uh, for the district curriculum team, he puts in lots of hours in the summer, and lots of hours after school as well. He helps students after school with tutoring and catch-up, and he also runs our video game club twice a month. Um, his dedication and expertise is beyond compare. He is truly one of the best teachers Roseville has. Evan was nominated by several of his fellow teachers, I believe there was four, four teachers that nominated him. Shelley Sakowski says about Evan, "Evan is an outstanding teacher because he engages and excites his students. Students love coming to his class every day because he makes his lessons relevant to his students. He can make a difficult concept easy for a sixth grader to understand. He shows, he shows an interest to his students' lives by being a sponsor for our video game club and showing up to their extracurricular activities." But perhaps, one of Evan's students says, says it best. Gabby O'Connell, a sixth grader, writes about Evan, and, and I quote directly, "Mr. Lewenberger is one of the best teachers here because he, he is always trying to find best ways to teach us. For example, if we are doing a worksheet, playing a game, or working in, or working in groups, he always makes it fun and enjoyable. He has plenty of ways for kids to have fun while working. For example, he has fidgets for us to play with while we read the lessons, and posters on the wall as examples of what we are learning. But one thing is for sure, when you're in Mr. Lewenberger's class, you will always be surrounded by fun ways to learn, and you will always feel like you are loved."
Next up, I'd like to have Mr. Jason Betten, he's the principal here at Roseville High School, and at this time, Mr. Dan Cheshire, can you please come up?
It's my absolute pleasure tonight to introduce this man to you, Mr. Dan Cheshire, the Roseville High School Teacher of the Year. Mr. Cheshire is our band director here at Roseville High School, and this room we are in truly is probably like his second home, maybe his third home, it depends on where his classroom falls in, in that mix as well. But it's a very, very rare thing for an educator to have their program, to have their classroom on constant public display. And Mr. Cheshire, with the great work that he does with our bands, and pushing them to perform, and having them at Friday night football games, throughout the winter season having them at band festivals, doing things like performing at the Memorial Day Parade, doing tours across the district, constantly has his students, his program, his instruction on public display. And his students respond so well to him. I don't think it's a coincidence that if you look at the students that are in our band program, you also see that they're involved in various leadership roles outside of band here at Roseville High School. I think that is because of the dedication, the commitment, the grit, the fortitude that Mr. Cheshire not only demands from his band students, but coaches them in, pushes them towards, really makes them believe that they can achieve and do what they want to do. Our band students are some of our highest achieving students here at Roseville High School, and it's a credit to Mr. Cheshire and all of the lessons that he is instilling in our students. In addition to that, he serves as mentors for other members of our music department. Uh, I think he sort of serves as mentors for the entire secondary music department in some way, shape, or form, um, or another, and Mr. Cheshire just does an outstanding, outstanding job. I think it's a real credit to him, uh, to be receiving this award tonight, and Mr. Cheshire in his entire time here at Roseville High School, uh, had an honor that I know he is incredibly proud of this year because it was a student honor. For the first time in his career this year, coming out of COVID, coming out of students trying to be involved in music through COVID, and learning to play an instrument through COVID, and all of those things, Mr. Cheshire had two members of his bands this year selected to be part of the State of Michigan All-State Band. An outstanding, outstanding achievement. And, and working with Dan for about two years now, I know he's a very modest individual, uh, but well-deserving of this award, absolutely puts kids first, and just does an outstanding, outstanding job with our students here at Roseville High School. So, Mr. Cheshire, congratulations. And I am here this evening with my wonderful wife, Tracy.
If you've been at the play this year and the Christmas, it was, they just sounded fantastic, it'd be the beginning of the year at the mall when they all played at the mall, they were just, sounded really good, we knew it was gonna be a good year, congratulations, Mr. Cheshire.
At this time, I would ask that the elementary principals and the middle school principals, please come to the stage. Elementary principals, we're gonna, while they're coming up here, what we're gonna celebrate next is our spelling bee winners. So, once they get established up here, I'll call up the spelling bee winners and you will stand by your principal. Raise your hand if you're a spelling bee winner, I wanna see where you're at. Okay, at this time, you see your principal up here. Spelling bee winners, come on up, and the Steenland spelling bee winner, you're gonna stand by this gentleman in the blue, he's raising his hand right now, he's here for Mr. Felker, so come on up, spelling bee winners. Yeah, let's hear it, come on.
Daniel Penrod was the winner at Roseville Middle School, and he won with a word that fits him very well the last couple of years, which was pandemic. Congratulations to Daniel.
This is Jonas Meeks, and he was the winner for Green Elementary, and his word was evaded.
This is Susanna Maroka from Eastland Middle School, she is the winner, she won with the word encompass, and just as a side note, her brother was runner-up, so, that's pretty good.
For Patton Elementary School, this is Brendan Foutzavat, and his word was yurt.
From Dort Elementary School, our winner is Madison Rothenberg, and her winning word was mosquito.
Good evening, the winner from Coment Elementary School is Isabel Richter, and she won on the word antidote.
Good evening. Good evening, I am Kelly Greider, principal at Kaiser, and I have Samaya Washington, and her winning word was arrested.
So, I am Brandon Kamorowski, principal of Fountain, and Chuck Felker, principal of Steenland. Josh John is a Fountain student, our spelling bee winner, and his word was doodled. And from Steenland Elementary, London Davis, and her word was traditional.
I'm London Davis, and I brought my, um, my mom, my dad, my brother, and my two grandparents.
My name's Josh John, and I brought my mom.
My name is Samaya, and I brought my mom, my dad, and my little sister, DeWitt.
My name's Isabel Richter, and I brought my mom.
My name's Madison Rothenberg, and I brought my dad.
My name is Brendan Foutzavat, and my mom and dad is with me.
My name is Susanna Namieuchka, and I brought my parents and my brother with me.
My name is Jonas Meeks, and I brought my beautiful mother and my beautiful Gigi and my daddy.
Let's have one more round of applause. Spelling bee!
Mr. Rice, I just wanna say one thing first. The parents and family that was at the spelling bee, I was there too, and the words that they had were so hard, but to be in their, I thought, being in their position and being in front of all those people and have to spell a word, it was very scary, so they did a really, really good job, you're proud of all of them, thank you.
Next up, I have the middle school band directors, Mr. Hill and Ms. Shapula, and we're gonna be celebrating the students who were selected for Middle School Honors Band, so, Ms. Shapula, you are asked.
And just wonderful seeing everybody here, thank you again for being here, um, we love having the opportunity to honor the band kids and all their accomplishments at the meeting. Um, I'm actually gonna turn it over to our Eastlands, Mr. Hill.
Good evening, yes, I'm Mr. Hill. Please hold your applause till the end, we're gonna call the students up on stage. From Eastland Middle School, we have Anaya Bulley. We have Chloe Kogi. We have Lila Davis. Tragan Green. And Franklin Zini. And you guys go ahead. And from Roseville Middle School, we have Ms. Peyton Redford. And these students were selected, there are over forty schools in the area that send in nominations to participate in the District 16 Honor Band. Only about a hundred students, a hundred and ten students make into each the seventh and the eighth and ninth grade band, so for us to have our students selected and to perform with such an all-star kind of group is just a blessing, not only in our classroom, but for their own musical enrichment. These students work very, very hard every day, they are true leaders in our program. If you were at the last meeting where we honored our student leaders, you might have noticed, some of them weren't there because they were at Honor Band. So, it's nice to see them kind of taking ownership of their musical journey, and also being leaders in their school, and being able to celebrate their successes and kind of enjoy their performance through the arts. So, thank you so much for all you do, and awesome job at your Honor Band performance.
Wonderful, yes, so wonderful, please state your name, and then who you came with.
My name is Franklin Zini, and I came with my mom, my dad, my aunt, and my grandma.
My name is, oh, my name is Tragan Green, I'm here with, uh, my mom, my dad, and one of my grandparents.
My name is Chloe Kogi, and I'm here with my mom.
My name is Anaya Bulley, and I came with my, my mom and my two siblings.
My name is Peyton Redford, and I came with my mom, thank you.
One more round of applause for those band students. At this time, if I could have Coach Earl and Coach Morgan come up to the stage and bring that undefeated team with you. Team, you can come on up, that undefeated team, come on up with your coaches.
I'm Coach Earl, this is Coach Morgan with me, my assisting coach, we are a team together in this. Our second passion, actually sometimes we say it's our first passion, but we have to teach first, and then we get to go play basketball. So, it is a passion that we continue. The girls up here tonight have worked extremely hard this season, with this being my fourth year at this level, after stepping down from the high school, and missing that undefeated season every year by one game, one moment, and these girls pulled it off with an undefeated season of 10-0. So, congratulations, ladies. Before I have the girls introduce themselves, I do wanna say a shout-out to the parents, so, thank you to the parents, because if it wasn't for the parents, the girls wouldn't be able to get to practice, get back home and picked up, and the support that we had at our games, and feeling like we owned every court we went to because of our fans, thank you to the parents, so, thank you.
Okay, I'm told to go to the other side.
Uh, my name is Morgan Russell, and I brought my mom, my grandma, two sisters.
My name is Paige Edwards, and I brought my beautiful mother and my handsome brother.
I'm Ava Lee, and I came with my mom and my dad.
I'm Adrianne Hill, and I came with my mom and my brother.
I'm the family kin, and I came with my little sister and my mom.
I'm Gabrielle Lewis, and I brought my mom and my brother.
Coach Morgan, and I brought my parents and my second parents.
I'm Chelsea, and I came with my mom.
I'm Vanessa, and I brought my grandma.
Uh, I'm Chloe Chase, and I brought my favorite teacher, my three sisters.
My name is Ariana Moore, and I came with my little sister, my mother, my father, my two godbrothers, and my godfather.
My name is Brooklyn Johnson, I came with my three sisters, my favorite teacher, Ms. Morgan.
My name is Asya Stewart Ellis, and I came with my dad and my favorite teacher.
We don't want them to get away from us without getting their certificate. We have another undefeated team to celebrate tonight, and that's boys' football, and I'm looking for Coach Mark Baldaz. Come on up, Mr. Baldaz. Mr. Baldaz.
All right, well, thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight, the middle school football team, uh, just like the Royals basketball team, an undefeated season, has eluded us for four, following last four seasons, we finished the season with one loss, and this season we committed ourselves to outworking and outperforming every other team that we played, out preparing, and that resulted in shutouts in every game, but two, we only gave up two touchdowns the whole season, both coming in the last two games late in the fourth quarter. So, when I, uh, call your name, come on up, I think I found everybody that was here, King Abrams. Charles Chapman. Lawrence Coleman. Rashard Davis. Jamari Dean. Montez Duckworth. Dakota Evans. Elijah Green. Jack Radzinski. Tristan Hilliker. Brendan Hinsky. Robert Jones Jr. Sam McGrath. Justin Aiden. Marcel Nevitz. Malachi Parker. Donovan Perry. Nelson Rodriguez. Samuel Watson. Did I miss anybody else? Any other football players I missed that might've came in afterwards? All right, couple of things we did to outwork, outperform teams, also to build a good team chemistry, camaraderie amongst all the players for our preseason camp, we had team dinners every week, a character program, film sessions, Sunday practices, homecoming parade, teacher jersey giveaways, opponent boards, and also we awarded, uh, players with, um, we celebrated perfect attendance, also Lineman of the Week, and, uh, we got the boys' undefeated shirts for, um, their accomplishment this year, and also for the board's, uh, support and central ad, we also gifted them with the, um, rendition of the same shirt this evening as well. So, let's hear it once more time, one more time for the middle school football team. Their first undefeated It's their first undefeated season in seven seasons. Say your name, who you're with.
I'm Brendan, and I came with my dad.
I'm Nelson Rodriguez, and I came with my mom and my dad.
I'm Sam McGrath, and I came with my mom and my pops.
I'm Malachi Parker, and I came with my mother and my brother.
I'm Marcel Nevitz, and I came with my grandma.
I'm Elijah Green, and I came with my sister, my sisters, my brother, my mom, and my nieces.
I'm Charles Chapman, and I came with my mom and my sister.
I'm King Abrams, and I came with my dad, my mom, and my sister.
I'm Lawrence Coleman, I came with my mom, my auntie, and my grandma.
I'm Montez Duckworth, I came with my mom, my aunt, and my grandma.
I'm Dakota Evans, and I came with my mom and my two sisters.
I'm Rashard Davis, and I came here with my dad.
My name is Robert Jones, and I came here with my biggest supporter, my mother.
My name is Jamari Dean, I came with my pops.
My name is Jack Rzynski, and I came with my mom, dad, and my sister.
My name's Tristan, and I came with my mom and the best principal, Ms. Baker.
I'm Justin Aiden, I came with my mom, my dad, and my brother.
My name's Sam Watson, I came with my mom.
My name Donovan Vera, I came with my dad and my brother.
My name Dewayne McGivern, and I came with my biggest supporters of all time, my dad and my mom.
Take a picture now before they go. All right, great job, one more hand for this undefeated football season, nice job, guys. We still have one more person to celebrate here today, but while we're waiting for some of these football players to get seated, just, just take into account how many great things we have going on here, how many great kids, how many great staff members, and how many great parents. Let's hear it for all of you. At this time, I'm gonna step aside and let my very handsome boss take this last one.
Handsome. You gotta clean your glasses, Mr. Rice. We have a very special recognition tonight, I'd ask that William Scheinflug to come on up here, please. William here is a senior at Roseville High School, he'll be graduating this year, and he was able to complete the Eagle Scout Award. I stand next to this young man as an Eagle Scout myself, so I know what it takes and what he had to put into this to make it happen. It is a very distinguished award. There's a lot of leadership skills that go into his final project. He has to lead a crew of people to help him complete the project. He does not do the project, he helps other people do it. He has to plan it, he has to budget it, he has to carry it out, and then he also has to do a final plan with some, what do you say, some hints to yourself on how to do it better, you know?
Try some improvements.
Yeah, look for improvements on what he could do differently. These are leadership skills that will help him throughout his whole life. There's many merit badges that he has to earn along the way, you know, he was probably at some point this high, out there trying to start a little campfire and cook and do all the crazy things and have mushy pancakes and spaghetti at every campout because it's easy to cook and hard to get sick off of it, I think, but anyway. So, yeah, a lot of really good experiences through the scouting program. Only, what, four out of a hundred or something will reach, that are in scouting, will reach this award. So, I personally would like to congratulate William for this great honor. Congratulations, sir. I'd be remiss if I forgot to talk about the family. As you know, in the scouting program, there's a lot of support that has to come from parents, just like the basketball team, you gotta get them to practice, you gotta get them to meetings, you gotta take them out on campouts. Mom's probably saying, you gotta get this done, you gotta get this done, so there's a big support system at home that, that is required for him to reach this, so I'd like to, I'd like to give some credit to the parents as well. Why don't you introduce them?
Thank you, Mr. Blaskowski, I'm here with, I'll start with my grandmother on the end, my dad and my mom and my two brothers, Chris and Sam. Like Mr. Blaskowski said, they, they were always there for me, they're still there for me, and I know I can always fall back on them if I need to while I'm making it through this, this challenge. It was definitely a challenging, a challenging path to the top, but now that I'm here, I've proven to myself that I can do it, and I thank them for being there the whole way.
Why don't you give them the rest?
Yeah, so for my Eagle project, I built a multi-level shooting platform, it's for a 3D archery course. We constructed it out of some old steel stairs that were on the side of a building, they were torn off during demolition, and we repurposed them along with a few of the I-beams from that building, and we turned it into this archery platform for the 3D archery course at Perch Point Conservation Club, and that has been a helpful asset to the 3D archery program to help archers better improve their shooting skills on that course.
About how high is it?
The first platform is about eight, seven, eight feet high, and then the second platform is about fourteen feet, so, yeah.
Congratulations, William, again. Good luck in the future, and never forget those beliefs and values that come through the scouting program, so you gotta carry that on and pass that on to the next generation, okay?
With all those awards, we're gonna just have a few comments from the Board of Education members, and then we're gonna go into a recess for five minutes in case you folks need to leave. So, we're gonna start with Ayur, Ms. Gina.
I just wanted to say congratulations to all the people honored tonight and to the parents and everybody for supporting them along the way as well.
Yeah, congratulations, good job to the parents, that's where the real support happens, and it's nice to see you all out here this evening, and great job to all the kids.
Congratulations to all the students tonight, this is one of our favorite nights to be on the school board, to see all this, and thank you to all the parents that helped all the kids, and thank you to all the staff.
Just a special congratulations to those perfect teams, it reminds me of the Remember the Titans movie, when Julius talks to his coach and he tells him, with all due respect, sir, you demanded us to be perfect, right? I might not be perfect, but we're perfect, so congratulations, it's so hard, especially that last game when it's all on the line, you managed to pull it out, so congratulations to the, to all of you.
So, William's family out there, look at his little brother, he's gonna be like you one day and be up here, look at him, the whole family's got awards, very nice, congratulations to all his students.
Congratulations to, once, this list is unbelievable, I mean, to our teachers, spelling bee winners, middle school band students, the basketball team, eighth grade basketball team, football team, and William, for your, your great honor there, congratulations to all of you, like Joey said, parents, thank you for your participation, please keep involved with your, with your students and keep it going. Also, thank you to all of our teachers, and congratulations on this being appreciation, Teacher Appreciation Week, so thank you for all you guys do. Principal Day today, too? Oh, wow.
Kids and parents, thank you so much for everything you do, our wonderful teachers, thank you from the bottom of my heart, you hold a special place for all of us, and you are appreciated.
Same thing everyone's saying already, congratulations to everyone, we appreciate all of you. Parents, thank you for being there for your kids, because that's what it takes for them to get here, and I just want to say thank you to all of the principals, you guys are wonderful, I appreciate all of you, all the staff, just thank you to everybody, thank you all.
Thank you, parents, staff especially, all your hard work, and congratulations to all the award winners.
Just to repeat what everyone has already said, congratulations to everybody, thank you teachers, thank you parents.
Same thing.
We have a recess, before we have a recess, we have public hearing, does anyone from the public wish to be heard at this time? We wanna, a couple of our guys have these nice sweatshirts on that they gave us for undefeated seasons, and we really appreciate that, that was nice, thanks, Mark. Anyone from public hearing wants to be heard tonight? Public hearing is closed, and we'll take a five-minute recess for you folks to leave if you have to. If you want to stay for the meeting, you're more than welcome, but don't kill yourselves getting to the door.